I was thinking if you heard anything from the phone grant application. I'm thinking we're waiting on some signature from the county.
I talked to Lee about that.
And Bull Frye.
Okay.
I need to check my email to see if I can.
But see, I have to, I could go into the system and sign it.
John, how are you?
I'll check on that.
He says, he says they might be signing, but I need to leave email on the show sign. I need to leave email just halfway off of offer. So I just kept looking back on the signature.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? And I, so we've just got to be there.
Seventeen eighty-five.
That's true. Yeah. Oh, I mean.
He's got a lot of money. And he gets a death certificate. Yeah, he, he, he got confirmation.
From the, from the post office, he got certified.
Thirty-five.
Certified, and it says it's picked up, so it's something taken in common. But then it's signed in the letter of signing.
Eric. That's him though.
Okay.
Is the warrant, warrant that I'll serve? So, so where are the out-of-country trips coming from? Are the little ones still not ready to bench this?
Hey, how are you doing?
I got a long view with the cars. This is more close to his house, he thinks. I think the truck said he was around here still.
Something, I'll, I'll check, I'll tell her. Because one of them, this guy named Ken. Yeah, he came to the office, he was back, he had been to the front. He was the one that told me right there. Oh, okay. Well, maybe he did. I would, I would try to make sure the next of the game. He said he has to get a, a long view. Okay, well, maybe he's not having. I don't know. Not wanting to get out more than the. That's all. I'm just. Because it seems funny that you could see that.
The crate off.
You know, truck. I'm pretty sure there was three vehicles there. There's a truck, I think it's white car there, and I thought I could see another vehicle back there, but I wouldn't swear to. And you didn't get there and go, yep, I'm with two vehicles there.
All right, I'll, I'll let you know. See, I'm gonna see what's on.
Yeah. And I'll beat up like.
So there you go. Let me know about your guy.
Here you go. I can't make anything on stuff. Really pause for that. We'll, we'll go with everything you say.
Thank you.
I keep speaking to me, I thought a whole group of videos into the wall. Two, um, people. Yeah, who do you want to do that? Yeah, I'll slip it in this.
Oh, I've seen her. Uh, I know. Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
And the six o'clock meeting is a continuation until Thursday. Thursday morning, we have a video. So it's not a whole hundred people.
Doesn't it do regular meetings? Does that have to be like?
Right.
Called over the New Kent County Board of Supervisors December thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Special broadband discussion meeting to order. Ms. Watkins, will you call the roll?
Mr. Evelyn.
Here.
Mr. Tiller.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Mr. Steers.
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood.
Here. All right. Good afternoon, everybody. Um. Mr. Hathaway, you gonna start, start us off here tonight?
Yes, sir. All right. Um, before you, you should have an agenda in front of you with some talking points, which will kind of lead our conversation, uh, this afternoon. Uh, starting off with a project overview, and basically that's just where are we at now? Uh, with our broadband efforts and, and planning. And some of this is for the public, as probably more so, uh, the first points I want to make just to bring everybody up to speed. The county worked last year with a company called River Street Broadband, as, as you're aware of, uh, to develop a broadband plan and design, uh, for the county with the goal of serving every single household, um, with broadband service. That plan was completed. Um, the total cost of that plan was just under fifty million, with the county's obligation being just under twenty-five million. Uh, the remainder of that balance to get to fifty coming from federal grants, um, and private investment. The county, based on that plan, um, worked with River Street Networks, um, to submit a Virginia telecommunications initiative grant application. Um, that grant was submitted, it was prepared by River Street and, and submitted. As you know, with the VATTI grant process, a locality just can't apply for funding by itself. We have to partner with an internet service provider, uh, to submit an application. Uh, that is a, a requirement. Um, and we did the process a little backwards from the way that I would have liked to do it, but with the timing, uh, this VATTI grant application process, uh, the governor, uh, utilizing some federal funding mainly from CARES Act, um, put in seven hundred and thirty-three million dollars into the VATTI grant pool this year, um, which is more than has ever been put in. Usually it's around fifteen million a year available to the entire state. Uh, so we had an opportunity, probably an opportunity that we may not see again. So we partnered with River Street to submit the application. Now, I say we did it a little backwards from the way that I would have preferred, um, because after we submitted the application, then we put out a request for proposals, uh, to partner with an internet service provider. Had to be done that way in order for us to meet the deadlines for the VATTI grant process. Again, we will probably never see that much money, um, into the, the VATTI program again. But we have advertised for an internet service provider to serve New Kent. That advertisement was issued on, uh, November fifteenth. The due date for proposals is Thursday, December thirtieth. So we're getting close to the due date, uh, for proposals, and I've talked to two firms that have expressed interest thus far, and there may be more out there that we actually received proposals from.
Did you say how many we've already heard from?
I've, I've heard from two. I haven't seen the proposals, but I've gotten questions regarding our, uh, request for proposals from two firms, and both have expressed an interest of actually submitting a proposal. When we receive proposals on December thirtieth, um, we will definitely review those proposals and pick at least two firms to meet with, um, before we bring a final recommendation to you as to who to partner with for internet service provider. Currently, well, a little bit about the proposal. Based on the feedback that I've gotten from you, um, after presenting this to you several months ago, uh, there were changes made to this proposal. Um, we were more specific on, uh, the speeds, uh, that we were expecting from a provider, um, which we put in here. When I first presented it to you, the speeds were based, well, it was the minimum requirement based on, uh, the FCC's definition of high-speed broadband. Um, we've increased that to a hundred megabytes uploads, hundred megabytes download, um, which definitely is achievable with a hundred megabytes per second, which definitely is achievable with a fiber optic network service. And that's also something that we specified in here as well, that we were looking for a fiber optic solution to serve New Kent County. There's a lot of ways to provide high-speed broadband. There's wireless solutions, there's coaxial, um, and some would even call copper lines potentially high-speed, um, and legally I think they meet the definition. Um, but we were specific that we were looking at a fiber optic solution to serve every single home, so. As far as available funding, as you may recall, um, the board has decided to set aside revenues received from Colonial Downs specifically for broadband. Uh, and, and we've done that. We've not touched that funding other than, uh, the four million that you approved for the financing of the, the Quentin Elementary School, the new elementary school that's under construction. Um, our current balance, uh, for broadband right now, and this is just a balance for funds received from Colonial Downs, is thirteen million, four hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and thirteen dollars and eighty-four cents. This does not include additional funding, um, that we will be coming before you shortly asking you to appropriate to broadband, and that funding comes from the ARPA funds that we've recently gotten. Well, we've gotten half of it so far, we'll get the other half in March, totaling four point two million dollars of federal ARPA funding. Um, we're gonna recommend that that total amount be appropriated for broadband as well, giving you just over seventeen million dollars of funding for broadband. Remember, our goal is to get to twenty-four. We believe we'll be very close to that by the end of this fiscal year, and definitely the early part of next fiscal year, uh, we should have the twenty-four million needed to totally fund, uh, broadband to the entire county, which is a good thing as far as capital projects, because what that means is that we're going to, after we set aside everything we need for broadband, we're going to be receiving significant revenues, um, for capital projects, which means we'll be able to cash fund, uh, some of our upcoming capital project needs and not have to look towards banks for, for financing. So we're gonna be in a good position financially, and I'm very comfortable where we are with, uh, the broadband funding right now as well. VATTI grant. Right before coming to you, uh, coming in, walking in this room, um, I received a call from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, uh, literally about five minutes ago, ten minutes ago, um, informing me that the governor's announcement comes out today, and we were not funded for this pool of the VATTI grant project. I've not had an opportunity yet, um, just finding out to have a conversation with River Street, uh, but believe me, I will be, um, very early tomorrow. And because this meeting was getting ready to start too, um, I told D A C D I'd like to, to reserve some real time to sit down with them to really discuss our application and see where, um, we did not score well. That, it's very disappointing, but at the same time, we still have the funding to move forward on this project, um, without the VATTI grant. I would have loved to have the VATTI grant money, um, but to be continued, um, I know that with the federal stimulus bill, there's gonna be other significant funding for VATTI grants and future processes, um, but as I learn more information about the VATTI grant process and our application scoring, um, I'll be sharing that with you.
That's a little more than disappointing to me, but, uh, it was a little over four million dollars all combined, wasn't it?
Well, the total grant application was just under nine million. I believe we requested about three point seven from the VATTI process, um, and the remainder to get to that nine came from the county and River Street.
Is there a way for us to protest, not just question, but, I, I mean, really challenge this, because we've, we've done everything they've asked us to do. I mean, our, our grant was structured to dramatically change the way things would be done in New Kent as far as broadband's concerned. It's fiber to the home, we were funding a significant portion of it ourselves. I mean, it just makes no sense that they didn't come back with something for hundreds of millions of dollars to be flowing through Virginia, and New Kent gets snubbed again. It just doesn't smell right to me, so.
Uh, I don't know the answer yet, um, but I will get that answer tomorrow morning.
Thank you.
Um, that's where we are with broadband right now as far as item A. Um, well, one thing I, I will mention too, as I print it out, who got funded, and I do have a copy of the announcement that came out, um, which was weird because right while I was printing, that's when I got the phone call from, from the state. Um, I see a lot of projects that got funded that their projects involved a universal coverage for their county. So basically, there were larger projects, um, that pretty much covered the entire county. You know, we did not get that direction, uh, when the grant process was, um, starting and when they were accepting applications, and that that would be considered more, um, because we would have definitely asked for more.
What kind of size range in grants were they?
Sure. Well. And I'm going through here, trying to get to a single one, because a lot of these are regional projects, um, planning district commissions, um, a lot of the money went to planning district commissions, so it's hard to tell, um, the size, like Cumberland, uh, Plateau Planning District Commission, that was a twenty-nine million dollar project. Uh, Leno Wisco, Lee, Wise, Scott County, uh, that was a twenty-eight million dollar project. Hampton Roads Planning District Commission, that was a thirty-five million dollar project. Now, that's the total amount. Uh, when I say thirty-five for Hampton Roads, twenty-one was VATTI, thirteen was leverage, private and local funding. Um.
Let me see if I.
Hanover County. Um, Hanover County with all points broadband, which is something else I've noticed, all points broadband was very successful, um, in the governor's round. Um, Hanover was a fourteen million dollar, um, award with forty-one million dollars leveraged.
I know that you always, Mr. Hathaway, you always say that, you know, demographics kind of hurt us a little bit here in New Kent, but I mean, Hanover, golly day, I mean.
Well, and not just Hanover, King William County. Um, and, and those are the two closest to us. Everything else was out in the valley area or southwest Virginia. Um, there was an Eastern Shore project, but in our area, um, Hanover and King Williams, King Williams, uh, received five point four million dollars in VATTI, and they leveraged, uh, twelve million dollars in private and, and public funding. The majority of the awards were southwest Virginia now. So, stay tuned, more to come after some conversations that will definitely take place tomorrow. Moving into item B, contractual discussions, um, which I believe was the, the main purpose of, of this meeting, knowing that we had the RFP out, um, and the due date coming soon, there's a couple of items that I've talked to you about over time, um, that we wanted to have a discussion about. Um, and one item that keeps coming up is ownership. And I've kind of laid out three options. Uh, now, a lot of this will be dependent on the proposals that we receive on the thirtieth. Um, so I'm not anticipating that we'll take any action today, um, but more for a discussion for staff to have some direction. Um, there's three options for ownership. Uh, the first one basically is the county would own it, um, by way of creating a broadband authority, um, in which we would enter into an agreement with an ISP, internet service provider, uh, for the operation and hopefully the maintenance as well of the infrastructure. And when I say the county would own the system, uh, we would own the fiber optic lines, the electronics and equipment, um, associated with the, the network. Option two is for the internet service provider to own the infrastructure. We would be responsible for. But they would also be responsible for maintaining, uh, the infrastructure. We would enter into an agreement with them since we are contributing money, um, towards the development of this, and that agreement could include a revenue share agreement, so as they're making profits, they would share those profits with us, since essentially we would be a partner, being that, um, our investment would be approximately half of the total project cost. And then option three is a joint ownership scenario where, um, again, I believe that may involve a broadband authority, but we would own a portion of the system as well as the internet provider, uh, would own a portion. That portion would be based on the investment. I would still hope to put the requirement of maintenance and service provision on the internet service provider, and not so much the county, because that's just not something that we do, and that is what an internet service provider does. Want to move back to option two real quick, um, and this is actually something that I have talked to River Street about when they were developing the broadband plan, um, because they did offer, um, a revenue share agreement. One other thing that I, I approached with them, and, and they seemed open to discussing, is a, a right of first refusal clause. So in the event, um, they were to move on, um, and sell the network, we would have first right to refu, first right of refusal, and, um, our investment, uh, would be credited towards the purchase price, total purchase price. So that is an option that is combined in option two as well.
Mr. Lockwood. Well, I think everybody knows where I stand. I've been in favor of number one from the beginning, but I understand if there isn't the same feelings on the rest of the board. I do believe that, you know, based on the information that we were provided by the broadband advisory committee, um, we could do it for a whole lot less than they can claim, they claim it can be done. Our numbers were reviewed by, um, a consultant, and, and their numbers held up pretty good. So I think they're, you know, just like when we're dealing with any of these ISPs, the cost to build out the system seems to always be greatly inflated, and I think that's so they can claim they've put in a larger share than they actually did, and, um, at twenty-five million dollars, we should have something tangible to show for it. River Street's revenue sharing was almost an insult when you, when you factor in, it, it essentially boils down to what is our return on the investment of twenty-five million dollars, and it's pennies. So, um, if, if we can negotiate, uh, revenue sharing, I, I think that no matter what we do, whatever percentage of money we put in, we should retain at least that percentage of ownership. And I think, I honestly don't care who the provider is, I don't have anything against whoever that may be, but I expect, it, it's, the only concern I have is where our money goes and what benefits New Kent County. And the rest be damned, as long as, you know, this thing gets billed out, built out and built out right, and we get fiber to, to the home, and it's done promptly and efficiently, I'm fine with that, but I really believe that for us to be put. But I really believe that for us to be putting up that kind of cash, and that's what we're putting up, cash, we should be able to expect a return on the investment. Either let them pay us back, build out a note, we own fifty-one percent of it and you can buy it back, just like when you when you buy a car or you buy a house, you don't get that slip of paper until you make the last payment. So we retain ownership until you completely pay back with a a reasonable interest rate. There's, that money should come back to New Kent because the reality is when the broadband authority Advisory Committee put up their numbers, they were net positive in five years. That means you start making money on this system. That means River Street is going to be making money on this system as they should. They're a for-profit company. But we shouldn't be paying for their infrastructure carte blanche. It should come back to New Kent in some form or another. Either significant revenue share, not from the users of their service, but just like any other business, they would be paying it out of their operating expense. So if we're going to do something, we should get our money back or we should retain ownership. And if we're gonna have a if we're gonna have an option to purchase, that should be a fixed price upfront for, if if this whole thing costs fifty million dollars and we put up twenty-five million dollars, we should be able to buy it from them for twenty-five million dollars adjusted with the CPI or whatever you want. But that's the, that's the way it should be built. It should be protecting our interest and our community's money. That's, that's the most important thing to me on the ownership aspect of this is that we put in the, we put up the cash. We should retain something for that and have a return on it. That's just, I'm hard set on that.
So I guess I'm hearing option three. With an opportunity or maybe a opportunity for River Street to buy out our share. I don't know if that's the right term.
Yeah, I would, I would say, you know, if if we don't want to own it, that's fine, you know, but if we're gonna own a portion of it and they want to buy it out, it should be to pay back the money we put in. I mean, I I just think that's the, you know, the the most reasonable fairest aspect for us to look at is how are we going to get a return on our investment? We're going to get coverage for the county, great coverage with fiber to the home. So, you know, that that's obviously a plus, but we're still putting up the cash for a private entity to own that, that that infrastructure. And I can't think of another business where that occurs that you can get someone else to pay your bills for you. You know, that that would be like, why don't we buy Mr. Evelyn a couple of trucks for his logging company and just, you know, there we go. So I really think that we should have a a way to be reimbursed and or retain a a significant share of ownership. So in the event these, all these little companies that are building out broadband across the country decide to consolidate or merge or sell their assets to a larger entity, that we're not left holding a bag that they just cashed in. Wouldn't be the first time it's happened. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Lockwood. Ms. Page?
So I've got questions. So, um, of the authorities that we know of that exist, how many have been profitable after five years? And of the process that Mr. Lockwood is referring to, how many companies have entered into that type of agreement with localities?
Well, authorities that have tried to assume the role of Internet Service Providers, unfortunately, there's not a lot of success stories across the Commonwealth. The best, I guess, example would be the Eastern Shore. Although I would say from my meeting with the Eastern Shore and traveling out and meeting with the director, I was a little taken back by their lack of coverage in the rural areas. They offer a great product and really good service in the towns. But once you get outside the towns and the hard to serve areas, they really haven't made a lot of progress in serving the entire Eastern Shore. But, you know, that is touted across the state as being one of the more successful broadband authorities. A lot of that is because a lot of federal money was put on into that to get to Nassau, Wallace Island. And they have a huge contract with the Virginia Beach School System to provide Internet service to to Virginia Beach. So they have a lot of good things going to the, for them. It was just a little taken back of their lack of coverage in the rural areas. And 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 to me, that's not much different than what Cox is doing here and what a lot of the cable companies are doing, serving the easy to serve where the density is and not really making the investment outside of that.
I definitely think we're all agree that we have to do something. I mean, it's a, it's a necessity now. And I think, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I think all options for me are still on the table until we get the, we we need to get the RFPs, analyze them, go through them and kind of work with the, work with those companies and see what they're offering and see what we can negotiate and go from there. But time is of the essence. I would definitely agree with that.
Well, and and I think, and I'm not gonna say there's a good side, good thing about not getting a Vatty grant because right now I can't think of any. Other than our hands are no longer held to the contract process and all of that. As soon as we get a proposal and make a selection, we can go. We're, we're ready to go and start spending money. We don't have to wait till we get a notice of proceed from the state to start spending Vatty grant funding. So we may be able to begin a little bit sooner. It depends on how the negotiations and proposal reviews go.
Like Mr. Lockwood said, it is a lot of money and we are responsible to the taxpayers and we need to make sure we're getting a good product and we need to make sure that that we're getting what we pay for. Cause I mean, it's a lot to it. We need to get some professionals in here to go over and and look at it as well.
And I think that when you're looking at, you know, successful broadband authorities, you you need to take a look at some of the co-ops that are out there that, you know, you, there, there's a a real close correlation to what co-ops are doing and what broadband authorities are doing. And on, and on that front, there are several very successful ones out there. And and a lot of this is also, we're kind of in a testing period where, you know, nobody ever thought the day would come where this kind of money would be thrown at a problem so fast. And there's a lot of stuff happening in Virginia, all across the country that, you know, would not be happening if we hadn't gone through the last couple of years and and had this dump of cash from the federal government. So, you know, a lot of what's happening now is almost the test of of what will work. And, you know, the co-ops that are out there have, are are doing well and very promising. And I would, I would put that in the same category as a structure as an authority.
I agree. I mean, the co-ops, co-ops really have led the way in Virginia, I think. I mean, they've been very progressive in the deployment of fiber and they've created models that have been copied throughout the state.
It's like we're a broadband black hole. We can't get Vatty grants. We don't have a co-op to work with, you know, like some of the other entities out there and we're just gonna have to do it on our own.
I I just think that, um, this is like I sixty-four. I'm sorry. I just, I just can't let this one go here. I I just think that when, um, I I like all the negotiating points of getting someone in here to do it. I truly do. I think that my thing with an authority, we're not going to get the opportunity for a do-over. And, um, and and now where we are, I don't think that we have a a lot of time to, um, I'm not gonna say do our due diligence, but I think that, you know, going out, maybe we even talk to, who, it's like Gusha, not Gusha, um, Louisa, they're doing a co-op now. Maybe find it, talk to some of these other companies, letting them know that, you know, we're looking for companies and, um, and then see what their negotiating ability will be. Right now, when we talk about what New Kent will get back, we look at, I think we look at the funding that will go into this that won't come from New Kent. But regardless to, we may not get back everything and money-wise, but what we will get back from our citizens being serviced, having serviced, that counts as well. And so right now it's critical because we still in a point, at a point in time where, um, many companies are closing down offices and it's a requirement that you work at home. We don't, we don't know, um, nobody knows what tomorrow brings, but, I mean, who knew that two years from now we would still be hanging on, um, to our new fashion design? Who knew we would still be doing that? So with all that being said and done, I think that we look at the negotiating points. But I think that that not be the complete driving force because we have to keep in mind of servicing our citizens. And and for me, if we do a much better job than our present providers have for us, then I think that in itself is an accomplishment. And even, and and I might as well throw this out there, uh, interest rates for loans will not be just low very much longer. So even if it becomes, um, a loan, a just in case loan, a rainy day loan to get it while interest rates are so low, we may even have to think about that point. But it's like, by any means necessary. But, so just, just my two cents on this.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Steers?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman. My question is if we create a broadband authority, that's like creating another county entity, right? And are these people going to be paid or they're going to do this work for free?
They do not have to be paid. Actually, you can be the broadband authority.
Well, we don't have enough to do, sir. No, but, I mean, I. No, 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 no. But, I mean, we're creating another entity in in the county and if if we're gonna have an authority and we own the system, like if a customer calls up and wants to be connected to the service, who's in charge of doing that?
They call supervisor stairs.
Patricia Page gonna go out there and hook them up or is John Lockwood gonna go out to his Barronville people? And how is all this gonna work out?
Well, if we had, we have public utilities and I don't know but you, but if something happens, I get a call.
Oh, yeah. Well, I know, but public utilities, I don't think they take on another whole new.
No, I mean, if 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 we were to be the authority and ISP, we essentially would be standing up a new utilities department. Or, uh, we would be contracting with an ISP to handle the maintenance and service delivery. That that was my thinking under option two. Well, actually, o- option one, two, even if we created the authority, that only dealt with ownership. But as far as actual service delivery and maintenance responsibility, that would be something that I think we should contract out to the service provider. So it would be their responsibility. So if something's down at twelve o'clock and at night, it's the service provider's responsibility to make those repairs.
But that's what this meeting is about.
Yeah, I mean, you know, whether we outsource that or not, the the responsibilities are a little bit different if 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 we own the system.
But I definitely agree that we need to protect our investment. One hundred percent, no matter which route we go. You know, we need to invest or protect our taxpayers' money. But also, I just don't know if we want to be the ones out there doing all that legwork too. Maybe it's better to contract with somebody else to do the work, let them pay the the bill straight to them and then we get our percentage or whatever. My two cents.
Other contract items that we're going to be looking at and dealing with, performance, definitely, we want the proposals to be very specific as far as timing. And we're going to be looking at ways to include some penalties if they don't meet their obligations. I mean, these are big contracts. And we want to ensure that they can de- deliver the service that they're they're proposing. So that will definitely be part of the negotiation performance. I've mentioned speeds. They're gonna have to prove to us that they can meet our requested speeds of a hundred milli- megabytes per second, over a hundred megabytes per second. But if they're proposing a fiber optic solution, they should have no problems showing that. One other thing that I'm gonna pay close attention to because we run, all of us run into this situation a lot with our current provider in the county is we want it to be, we want the contract to be pretty specific as far as when they will extend their existing service. Yes, we're starting out with a solution to every single home, but we're gonna have a lot more homes over time. So we definitely want some specific requirements as to when and how they will extend service. I think that that's going to be extremely important down the road as we're all running into issues with that now.
Yeah, I think especially where they're, you know, we're in multi-unit developments, it should be a requirement that they run fiber regardless of hookup. I mean, just, it should be in the ground, just like every other utility. I think we need to look at it, you know, whether the FCC or Virginia SCC does, you know, we should, we should be considering it a required utility for every new construction, would for neighborhoods that it's already available, you know. That's certainly the case because it is no different than running a phone line at this point. I don't know why anybody would run a phone line anymore, but.
Verizon doesn't want to, it seems like.
But, you know, if you got water sewer or something else coming to the house, there should be fiber there too. You know, we can do that in our zoning ordinance.
And 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 I agree that that is something that we need to look at, you know, requiring developers of subdivisions, maybe above a certain size to run that dark fiber. So at the end of the day, it's not on our dime, taxpayers' dimes to get people connected or not on our provider's dime too. That also though, kind of depends on who we select as a partner. Because I can tell you, we've had these conversations and that's why we haven't done it yet. But Cox will not connect to dark fiber. If they don't install it, they're not going to connect to it. So we have to get a provider that's open to that.
Sure. I mean, and that would just really be a matter of, contractors would need to meet their requirement, their their standard, so.
We also need to get an understanding too of the distance off the road that the provider will connect to. Cause this has become an issue with Cox too. They'll only go a certain distance, uh, it might be three hundred feet, I believe, off the road. And anything else is on the actual home. And anything else is on the actual homeowner to pay that cost to make up, to connect the difference. Now, one thing, and one thing I liked about River Street, uh, was that their distance was fourteen hundred feet off of the road, which is more than most providers will, um, require. I also think that we should look at maybe setting up a grant fund to maybe share some of the costs beyond what the internet service provider will, will cover. Meaning that if company X only covers a thousand feet and it's two thousand feet to the home, we'll have a pot of money to assist families through application of a grant to maybe share half of that cost or a percentage of that cost to get the service all the way to the house. Just something to think about, um, and something we'll, we'll be looking at.
And that could be a negotiating point when we're talking to the ISP.
Yes.
We could specify that, too.
Yes. Yes. We definitely need to have an understanding of their registration process, uh, their rate plans. It is extremely important. And it all, it makes no sense if we're providing a service that nobody can afford. So we really need to have an understanding of their rate process. And it will be great, because I know some companies do this currently. If they could have special rates for low-income households. Cox, our current provider, if you have a student that's on free and reduced lunch, I believe they pay nine ninety-nine a month. They get a special rate. That's something we would hope to negotiate, uh, with our, our provider as well. And we also need to have an understanding of how equipment failures, maintenance, service interruptions, uh, will be handled with the company. For instance, if there is a service interruption, is the service center out in southwest Virginia, and it's gonna take three hours to get here to, to, to solve the problem and address the issue. Definitely, that's not satisfactory.
I thought that was something that'd call me, too, Lockwood. I will hook you up.
So we, we definitely need an, an understanding of how those issues, uh, will be handled. Because, I mean, we all know, even though it might be the service provider's responsibility, that residents are gonna look to the county, uh, when things aren't going the way they should, so. So that kind of leads me to next steps, and really, next steps are receiving proposals on, uh, December thirtieth. I will be going through those pro- proposals along with, um, our Assistant County Administrator, our IT staff as well. And we will probably look to someone that's in the field on the private sector to serve on, on our committee. Actually, I, I had invited our Director of IT for the schools to participate in the process, too. I just heard last week that he's taking another job with another locality. But we will find another, um, professional to, to fill that position on the review process, so.
And if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to be involved in those meetings as well.
Okay.
When would you get to the, uh, the contract at all? I guess, I know y'all are gonna review it, but
Oh, yeah.
Do y'all have someone specializes, I mean, this, in, in this type? Or we don't need to get some, get some outside counsel?
Mr. Chairman, I don't believe you'll need outside counsel, but I think, let's see what the proposals and where the negotiations go. Several, many other localities are doing this right now.
So you got something to go with?
So we've got something to compare it to. It's gonna be different in New Kent, for example, compared to Hanover, which has Dominion in a co-op building out their electric infrastructure, and then this private company proposing to do the last mile. But I think we can, I think we're okay. We can see what we get. There's a lot of questions that will be answered when we get the proposals.
Right.
Who, who it is, who proposes, what service, what's the cost, where, what's the timeline? All those essential questions, we're not gonna be able right now to sort of react to until we get the proposals then. I think let's, let's get them in and then make that decision. But I think we're, we're prepared to, to negotiate and draft the contract.
And the proposals will do for the public December thirtieth?
Thursday, December thirtieth at two PM.
Mr. Hathaway, you said you had, uh, two folks that had inquired about the RFP with you. Is that in addition to River Street or included?
No, that's Ri- River Street included and
So one other?
Yeah. All right. That completes my presentation, uh, for this afternoon, and if there's any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Anybody have any further questions, Ms. Hath- Ms. Hathaway?
No, I was just wondering if the county can, um, look to develop ordinances to require the developers of, of large subdivisions to install the fiber. Could we also require them to install Virginia Natural Gas lines?
Think we can. Um, but
Would do much good in Barbs.
Well, we though, we, we wanna work with Virginia Natural Gas, because some of those utility companies are very picky about who installs their infrastructure, and some just will not connect to it if they did not install it. I don't know if Virginia Natural Gas.
I know, but if you have a subdivision that possibly in the next year or so will be having natural gas lines installed, wouldn't you want them to be involved in some way with the installation
Oh, yeah.
of the fiber?
Yes, yes.
It's just conduit.
Yeah.
If you're on the fire or through the label, then the ISP would be responsible for that.
Yep. Yeah.
Conduits and crimps, a whole lot easier to get through.
Yes, it will. Cheaper, faster, yes.
Thank you.
If there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moving.
Thank you, Ms. Tiller, Ms. Watkins. We poll members?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Ms. Page? Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood? And Mr. Emmett?
Aye.